Good evening, everyone. Welcome to this regularly scheduled Township Board of Supervisors meeting. Our first item will be a pledge to the flag. Please join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have had no executive session since our last meeting, so at this point, I would like to open up the floor to communication from citizens. If there's anyone in the audience that would like to address us, please come forward, state your name and address for the record. And as you're walking up here, I'll just say, anybody on Zoom that wants to address the board, you can click the raise hand button and we will acknowledge you as well. Sir, name and address?
Name is Lenny Costa. I live at 124 Lady Morgan Drive. I'm a disabled veteran, so you know, I do stutter and stuff like that. Do apologize if I come off harsh or something, I don't mean to. I'm here today to fight for my rights as a veteran. Disabled by the Department of Defense at 100% from big government. Retired 100% disabled permanent total from the VA. And then it comes down to, my guys might push me away from here, but Pennsylvania state law states that I'm not supposed to pay taxes or anything being 100% permanent in total. I keep on getting, excuse me, I'm totally nervous. On you guys' website here, it shows that I'm all zeros, tax deduction, but I keep on getting things from you guys here saying that you guys want over $8,000 in taxes from me. And I don't know what to do. And I called up, I was told I was patronizing a person, tried to get in touch with you guys too, and I think it's unfair that if it's happened to me, then it's happened to all the veterans that served for this country. And to be honest with you, I'd rather be fighting the war than staying up here because that's how nerves I am right now.
So which tax is that that we're talking about?
York County and township taxes and school taxes.
Okay, so we can handle township. York County and school district taxes are separate taxing entities. So can we, can we get together with him and take a?
We can definitely get together with him and the tax collector. The tax collector's the person that handles all of that on behalf of the township. And she could maybe guide in the school taxes and who he needs to get in contact with the school taxes and the county taxes. But this is the first I'm hearing of it, so. But the tax collector is the person?
The tax collector is an elected official who is not part of what we do.
Yes, sir.
So we set tax rates, but we don't control collecting the taxes. So we will help facilitate you getting to the right people and getting your issue settled.
Thank you, sir.
But I think that's probably about the best we can do.
So if you could contact me, I can arrange and coordinate things straightened out.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your service.
Is there anyone else who would like to address the board?
My name is Sabra Madsen, 3409 Dininger Road. And I'm here today to discuss two petitions that I submitted to the zoning board directly to Randall. I don't know if, I've never met you before in person.
Hello, yes, I'm Randall Hyman, Director of Community Development for the township. So you didn't send anything to the zoning board, you sent it directly to me as the township representative for Community Development Department.
Okay. I have copies of the petition. Do you all need to see that?
Can you, can you explain what the petition is about and what you're looking for?
Sure, okay. So there's two petitions. The first one relates to traffic calming, specifically to speeding on Dininger Road, which is a danger to property and creates an atmosphere in which non-motorists are intimidated and endangered. My property has been involved in at least three accidents involving speeding vehicles on this road. We live like right on the S curve, so when people come down and they're speeding, they don't anticipate that S curve and they end up going right into our yard, damaging our fence and trees and our property. I've called the police, so it's on record somewhere. And I was advised to do a petition that that was, and bring it to you, because that was the only way that something could be done. So I did that. I looked up PennDOT's Traffic Calming Handbook and options include officer monitoring. I know that that's an issue with staffing. I mean, I am sensitive to that. I do see that Ridgewood Road is almost monitored continuously, so I wonder if maybe, you know, there could be sometimes on Dininger Road as well, especially in the spring and summertime when the traffic is really busy with people going down to the park. Rumble strips are an option, radar speed signs, or installation of a sidewalk at some point might also be an option. So we are requesting traffic calming measures, especially during the spring and summer. And this includes 22 of my neighbors as well that have all signed the petition, that have all reported problems over the years with this. So that's the first petition. You want me to go on to the second, or do you have any questions?
I'm just taking a look here. Yeah, that's what I thought. So are you down toward the bottom of Dininger where it comes down to Ridgewood?
No.
She's up.
We're up by Rocky Ridge Park.
Oh, that end?
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
By Hooters, right by Hooters Greenhouse there.
Yep.
Yeah. It dead ends at Rocky Ridge Park, so it's just, it's off of Mount Zion and then goes down to the park.
All right. I was looking where Dininger is on the other side of Mount Zion Road that comes down that hill and there's some sharp turns down there before it comes into Ridgewood.
Yeah.
So, no, I understand where you are now.
I mean, we've had issues where I, when my kids were younger, I'd have them in strollers, you know, going and people have nearly hit me. And when I kind of go like calm down, they're screaming at me using profanity. It's just, in the springtime especially, it just seems to really be an issue. And there's nowhere for pedestrians to really walk, there's no sidewalk there. So. I don't know what is a possibility for a solution, but I'm just presenting it as a problem that we'd like addressed.
Yeah, I've noticed that too in that area there. You're talking about the sharp, the two sharp bends?
Yeah. My house is like right on that, that S turn. It's an issue going all the way down to the park, honestly, though. We've talked to the Rangers and the Rangers are kind of like, we can't do anything, like nobody can do anything. That's why I'm here.
Chief, any thoughts? And we see this occasionally in other parts of the community as well with similar types of events. Anything else, Mark, that? I mean, that's not a, that's not a state road.
It's, it's our road, so we fully control it.
We fully control it.
So.
We could put rumble strips in? And then rip them out in the wintertime when?
Well, rumble strips are different than speed humps. Rumble strips are gonna make noise continually as cars go over them, which generally residents don't appreciate that continual rumbling of cars going by it. Speed humps. It's, the whole situation is a tough situation because as the data shows, a lot of those types of traffic calming measures, people, motorists, make up the time elsewhere. So if a lot of motorists, if they have to slow down to go over a speed bump, then there are a lot of motorists are backing the gas hard to make up that time they just lost for going over the rumble, or the speed table. So there, there are mechanisms. We could put our temporary speed humps up there, our temporary speed hump policy states, and if she has the signatures that she has, we put them in, our policy says we'll put them in, and then we need 100% buy-in of the residents within a certain distance to put the permanent ones in. Because in the past, we had where people were mad, they put them in, and then we tore them back out, the permanent ones. So that's an option. Sidewalks are a tough issue because generally sidewalks are paid for by each property owner when the house is being built. So we got a lot of homes up there that probably aren't anticipating that kind of expense to put sidewalks and curbs in, plus the roadway in front of her area, her property is fairly narrow, and I don't.
May not be.
We can look, we can look at anything, but to have a magic potion to solve it all.
Silly question, but is there a sign identifying the S turns coming up before it?
That's a really good question. I don't think so.
Could we put up a sign?
Yeah, hi, Chris Tate, I live in the far end of Dininger Road.
Hi.
Ma'am, if you, if you could come up and state your name and address, please?
Hi, I'm Chris Tate, T-A-I-T-T, live at 3540 Dininger. So we're neighbors. So we live on the far end, closest to the park, and we have noticed that certainly on our section, it's a straightaway, so people just let it fly. And we have a daycare that runs right next door to us, so we do have little children around. They're not in the street generally, but it's there. As far as I know, you've got the, the reflective tape on, on the telephone pole by your house, I think.
I honestly haven't noticed, and I live on the street, so that's how noticeable it is. Whatever's there.
Yeah. It's, I'm more surprised all the time that people haven't run more directly into your house. So it's, it's a very, very narrow S curve. There is some marking of it, but again, it doesn't quite solve, it may solve her problem, but it doesn't necessarily solve ours at the far end where people just let it rip. So that's it.
Back to.
Thank you.
To Mark's comment.
Manager's comment that if they have to slow down one place, they're gonna make it up somewhere else.
I mean, I personally think behavior modification, I'm a psychologist, so, you know, I believe in behavior mod, and when somebody sees a sign, like a radar sign posting your speed, I think that gets people's attention because they don't know if they're actually being monitored and can get a ticket or not. And that wouldn't use police resources. So in my mind, I thought that would be the most reasonable, but I don't know.
So I have a question for you. Do you deal with teenagers?
Yeah, oh, God, here we go.
I remember the speed signs when I was younger, and the kids in the high school would try to peg them at the highest that they could get them to go.
I mean, I think, but back then, we didn't have the technology that we have now too. Like, they know somebody's watching now, you know, so.
I think the most logical thing for us to do is to first set up, have the police department set up our radar boards, which will alert people what the speed limit is and.
How fast you're going.
Well, we typically, we do it a certain way. Eventually, we'll turn the boards on, but, and then we'll know what the actual speeds are in the area. And then kind of go at it from that angle, and then come up with a plan. Putting sign, the signage is easy. Whether people listen to the signs is a whole different matter. Putting up sharp turn ahead. People are gonna listen to it or not, unfortunately. But we can certainly start with a speed study.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Second petition?
All right, second one. The second petition relates to formal regulation of zoning permits and parking for Hooters Greenhouse events and private parties down the street. There was recently, somewhat recently, a change in ownership that resulted in new business strategies such as mass marketing of events online to regions beyond York. Dining, Dininger Road dead ends at Rocky Ridge Park. So there's numerous concerns that have come up that negatively impact the residents living on the road. Number one, there's lack of adequate parking for these events. They're just basically sending out mass marketing to everybody out in Lancaster, Elizabeth Town, and everybody's flooding in for these events. And they have an area of grass for parking, and a lot of times after the rain, it's a muddy mess. So they've got all these people coming in, there's traffic blocked, backed up all the way to my house sometimes. That's a half a mile from there. And then the people are parking in there, and it's a mud pit. When they leave, they're tracking the mud all down the street, and it's just, it makes a mess of our road for weeks afterwards. So, you know, I mean, we're, we, we take pride in our neighborhood and our houses, so it's upsetting seeing that, but it's also just dangerous. I mean, it's, we, we have customers parking on private property. I've personally had people park in our driveway. They pulled up in my front lawn, and because there's nowhere to go and they get desperate, it's backed up, they park on the side of the road all the way up. There's no sidewalk or anywhere for people to walk. And they pull up in our yard, and when I ask them to leave, they're screaming at us, you know, and getting belligerent with me because they're frustrated. It, it's just really gotten out of hand. People on the other side of Hooters have told me that they have problems getting out because everything's blocked, you know, going that way, and then the people coming in and out, they can't even get out because it's just one road that goes in there. Another neighbor told me that he was driving his RV, and a staff member of Hooters came out into the road and stood out in the road and told him to stop and didn't give him adequate time to even stop his RV, and gave him about a heart attack, and then they ended up getting into an argument. People, they get frustrated, they'll be in line, they get frustrated, they pull over in the opposite lane, they try to U-turn. It's a mess at these events. I'm not here, I hate public speaking, I'm not here, you know, to cause problems, it's genuinely a problem. And, and then, you know, like, before we had it organized for Christmas magic, it also poses an issue for like emergency vehicles. If there, if somebody had a heart attack at the other end, how our ambulance is gonna get through? I mean, it, it is a potential problem. So, let me see here, make sure I'm covering everything. Debris is also an issue. They leave, they throw trash everywhere, cans, and there's also noise, there's a lot of music. They have bands, and there's people living right next door. There's lack of adequate bathrooms. We have people urinating on the side of the road in front of our house because there's nowhere to go to the bathroom. Resident intimidation, like I said, when you ask them to move, they get nasty a lot of times. Dealing with the business owner, we've actually dealt with like retaliation, which is a concern as well, which is why a lot of my neighbors don't want to come here, honestly. I'm kind of putting myself out. And the last issue that I think kind of everybody shakes their head at is zoning and permits because from what I understand from Randall, this business does not have proper zoning, and it has ignored attempts to address permits. I don't understand. I don't understand how they get letters, and they just ignore all the rules, and they're able to continue having these events. And I've heard that they've been hostile to township members when they are approached, which to me is unacceptable. There's other things I've heard that are really nasty that I'm not even gonna bring up, but it's a problem. And, you know, the question just kind of comes up is like, why is nothing being done? If, if the township knows about it, they're requesting permits, they don't have the zoning, we've got all these problems, I've submitted a petition, like, why is this not being taken to the next level? So that we can ensure that they have, like, if they're gonna do this, do it right. Have the zoning, have the permit.
Just take it to the next level.
Yeah, do it right. I'm not against these events, but do them right if you're gonna do them, just like Christmas magic. I love Christmas magic. I loved Hooters before they did these events. You know, if they could figure out ticketing, like Christmas magic maybe, and, you know, have like slots of time to manage the amount of people coming in, if they manage their social media so they're not just inviting everybody all at once. I've thought they could shuttle like Christmas magic, or maybe work something out with the park where people could park there and then shuttle. I think there's a lot of solutions, but I've tried talking to the owner, I've tried everything possible, and I just kind of get, there's an entitlement there, that they don't have to follow the rules.
Would you like me to respond?
I would.
So, thank you for, for the information and the background on it. We have sent them a notice. I've been, recently been apprised of the situation. We are on top of it. They are very well aware now of, of exactly what the zoning is in the area and what they are and are not allowed to do and what permits are required, so it is on my radar and it will remain there. I understand that there is marketing material for events in the future. So, so the township will be on alert to watch for that, and, and we will make sure that the regulations, the permits and the ordinances are adhered to, to the, to the best possible ways from our perspective. So that's, that's the best I can offer you as of right now. I can't go back in and put the proverbial cows back into, into the barn for past events, but, but I can promise you that, that we are well aware of it and we're looking at it.
I appreciate it.
Sure.
Out of curiosity, if, say, in the next couple of weeks, they have an event and they still don't have the zoning and permits, are they allowed to have the event? I mean, is that legal?
So. It's kind of like somebody coming onto your property. If you give them notice or allow, not allowed to come onto your property, then, then that's when the issue is triggered. We have sent a letter outlining to them what they can and cannot do. If they engage in activity which is outside of the scope of that letter, then Randall can issue what he needs to issue in terms of a violation at that point in time, and then it will come into my court.
Okay.
Okay?
So to take that a step further, if they ignore the violation, what happens then?
So you have a notice of violation which goes out, they have 30 days to appeal that notice of violation. If they don't appeal it, then we file with the magistrate for the fines. They get fined for it. Assuming that there's no appeal from there, then we go and collect on the fine. Each day that that's not corrected, or, or the violations continue to occur, we fine again. So, so at some point in time, it becomes onerous on the, on the property owner.
All right. Are they permitted to have alcohol? Is that?
No.
Because there are trucks serving alcohol there as well? We see beer cans thrown all over the.
Those trucks are not allowed to be there. Food trucks are not allowed to be there for those events. They've advertised for Food Truck Fridays. So far, we have been up there three straight Fridays, and there have been no food trucks there during the lunch, lunch timeframe, who have not been there for the, what you would call the dinner hour, if you will, if they were having food trucks there. So I'm not sure they're advertising for them on their website, but they have not been there these past three weeks. But we are obviously monitoring that site very closely, and as the solicitor has indicated, if we get to the point where we need to file a criminal complaint with the district magistrate, that will occur.
All right. I appreciate your time, thank you.
Thank you. Sir? Yes?
I just was here for support on this. I'm Jeff Martin, I live at, I live up on Rocky Ridge Court, 2221 Rocky Ridge Court. I'm just here in support of what they're doing because now that you mentioned it, the food truck, the beer trucks are there, and what I'm here is if there's permits to be filed to be able to have those, and they're not doing it. And you're, you're addressing it, I appreciate that. So I just want to make sure it's getting addressed. If they're not following the rules, I have a problem with that. So that, that's all.
Yeah, and we agree with you, but if they're not there when we go there to enforce it, there's little we can do to enforce it.
So I guess the situation is because we're there, and at the time it's happening, how do we get in contact with someone? Should we just call the police to say, come up and take a look at the situation? They're not supposed to be here? How do you, how do you get it? So we're the eyeballs. We know you can't be everywhere, we're the eyeballs. That's where I'm, I guess the avenue I'm coming from.
The police department can respond to certain things, but the police department doesn't enforce zoning violations. So they can, and the chief can explain further what they can do and can't do, but there's certain things that is out of their purview, so.
So should we be taking pictures when we see that happening so we can have proof of, I mean, and then again, here we are with our cell phones being, I guess, senior citizens trying to do the right thing, but don't want to create an issue, I mean, other than making sure that people abide by the law?
Pictures are worth a thousand words, so.
Right, okay. Because I know what's probably happening is they're saying their food trucks on one date, and then they're having this thing over a weekend on a Saturday or Sunday, that's when they're having these events mainly, and, and they're all day events. They start at 10 o'clock and end at 6:00, something like that, so.
Yeah, those are the ones that are advertised on the website currently, and the one that was held on Mother's Day weekend, that was done without any permitting or any application that was submitted by the, by Hooters to hold the event, and the ownership there was aware of that from before. We were, we sent out a notice of violation for the previous event in 2023, so they were aware that they were not able to do that, even, even with the special event permit wasn't going to allow all the things that they were doing during those type of events. They could do something of a smaller scale, but not anywhere near what was transpiring. And with the, the notice that the solicitor referenced, we did send photographs that were posted on Facebook and things like that, so made, made them aware that we know what was happening during that particular event, and that if they're going to do something in September, which I think is when the next one's scheduled at the end of September, 1st of October, that they cannot have that type of event occurring moving forward. It's just not allowed, it's not permitted in our ordinance in any way, shape, or form.
Appreciate it, thanks.
Thank you. True.
So I'm wondering, as a community, when this happens, because it's going to happen, I don't want, you know, I was told to call the police. I don't want to continuously be using up the police officer's time for this. And they seem, I was told by the police officer that they do have permits and zoning. I don't think they even have accurate information, so I'd rather leave them out of it. So like as a community, when this happens again, should we just take pictures and as a community, send them all in? I'm, I'm just wondering what the recommendation is.
Chief, can you come up and, and let them know what type of things that they should alert you to? And to answer your, yes, so if you take pictures, you can send them to Randall and, and that kind of thing, but Chief King will let you know what, what they can help with?
Yes. We have no problem, as was stated, we don't, we don't enforce zoning law, zoning ordinances, we do criminal law. So we have no problem, though, coming up and documenting. So if you have a problem and you want us to come up, we can document that we were called, we have that in our records management system. The permit you were referring to, the permit that they at Hooters were referring to was a permit from the Liquor Control Board that they had gotten, not a permit from the township. So when the police department told you they had a permit, they had a permit from the Liquor Control Board. Now, it'll have to be discussed through the zoning whether or not that permit is legal because they're not allowed to have that event to begin with, so that's, that's, again, not within my purview. But I have absolutely no issue with when this occurs, given the police officers a call, they'll come up, we can help document these events and make certain that the information gets back to zoning.
But parking on personal prop, those kinds of things, you can help with that kind of thing?
Absolutely. If somebody parks on your property, I wouldn't confront them, I would call us. We'll come up and we'll make certain that they move. You're welcome.
So Chief, can you make sure that your officers know to document thoroughly and not just take a Liquor Control Board license as a, as a permit?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
And I'll make certain that we document the individuals if we have parking issues as well.
Appreciate it.
Anything else?
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone online on Zoom that would like to raise their hand to be recognized or anyone else in the audience? Uh, yes, we have Ron Rudisil. Ron?
I have a question about something else that's gonna go on out here. Uh, I recently read that they're gonna plan on replacing the bridge over the stream on Industrial Highway.
Yes.
Is that true? Okay, well, I live in the 100th block of North Rockburn Street. And it's a racetrack here anyway, since it's the only street between Market and, uh, Industrial Highway. But what's the township gonna do when they do this project? Because when we had North Hills Road closed for the railroad crossing, we constantly had tractor trailers coming up through here. They just, I don't know, they couldn't understand the signs or they just didn't care. But they, they were constantly coming through here. Is there something the township can do to address that? Because I know if they turn off North Hills Road and they start coming to the highway, they're gonna turn right up Rockburn Street.
We have already discussed that internally to some point. The design of the bridge is ongoing, so we have quite some time yet before the actual construction's gonna start. But we have already started internally talking about what we can do to minimize cut-through traffic using Rockburn and Old East York neighborhood as a whole. We, it's a little easier to do that with the tractor trailers than it is to stop passenger vehicles. But we have already just started discussing possibilities.
I do know that the passenger vehicles have a right to come through here. It's kind of hard to stop them, but the manner that they come through, uh, a lot of them blow through the stop signs and, uh, a lot of them speed through here. And I know the police don't have the manpower to constantly monitor this area, but, uh, I don't know. I don't, I don't know what can be done. But we do have young children in the area and I don't want to see any of them get hit because of something like this.
Yeah, we completely understand and agree. So as we're preparing those plans, we will be working out, uh, out details for what the traffic should look like through that area. We've done that in another neighborhood over on, um, Whiteford Road and 11th Avenue and have worked out some options there. Maybe there's some one-way things that we can do or, um, maybe detour posting and.
Yeah, we have time, but like I said, it's on our radar to not forget about.
Thanks, Ron.
Okay. Okay, I hope you can take care of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else this evening? All right, then let's move on to our engineering reports, environmental engineering. Diana?
Evening, gentlemen. I have nothing to add or change from our, our report that was submitted. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
I'm waiting for the day that you say I have something to add to my report.
I'll try to think of something for next time.
Anybody? Thank you. John, civil engineering report.
And I, I didn't change my script. I do have something to talk about, of course, right? A cup, a couple of things. I did talk about Druck Valley Residential Subdivision. Um, late, uh, last week, we got a 110 comments from the Conservation District and we, Randall and I and, uh, our township met with the, the developer and had a conference with them. So they're gonna continue to work on that plan. We'll keep you updated. But they've got to work through their erosion control issues. On Memory Lane, we also, the Memory Lane Apartment Project, we also met with that, uh, group. They have about 50 comments from the Conservation District and we're talking to them about, uh, the stormwater, because there's some, the stormwaters, uh, comments appear as like, all right, tell us what the drainage area is. That, that, that could generate 50 more comments. And, uh, so we had a, I think, a productive meeting with them. And so they're gonna be working on their plan. The, the two other things I want to talk about is the TASSA grant. The manager set up a meeting with Pendot and our liaison. And just to give you an, an example, the right-of-way that was created along Market Street, and I'm gonna say probably in the 60s or 70s, I can't, can't remember the exact year. But when Pendot created the plan, they created three sort of unique right-of-ways. One was a legal right-of-way, then they had a sidewalk right-of-way, and then they had a slope right-of-way. So in our TASSA proposal, we were bringing that sidewalk through. The developer informally told us, look, I can't afford to lose any parking spaces. Parking's at a premium, premium at this shopping center. And so because the construction and the design of that project didn't fit perfectly within the sidewalk right-of-way, the slope right-of-way. So the meeting that we had with Pendot was, well, you guys could convert that right-of-way. And, and, uh, so that's what our strategy is going to be going, going fur- further. The downside is we didn't have a budget in there for converting the right-of-way. We have to pay for the right-of-way, but it's not a very big right-of-way. It might be 3,000 square feet, which is, you know, uh, less than a tenth of an acre. So I, I think, I think that's a great resolution and, uh, it's gonna allow the project to move forward. But we just kept coming up with dead ends. A- and one of the dead ends that none of us liked at all was like, well, just stop the sidewalk, you know, 50 feet or 100 feet before it connects to the Coca-Cola sidewalk. And we're like, that's ridiculous. That, that doesn't work. You gotta have continuity here. And so I think we've got over the hump there and I, I think we're gonna start to see. W- we have Pendot looking down on the project and I, I think we're gonna get over the, the hurdles. And then finally, I mentioned that storm basin. And of course, it's 88 degrees today on the way over here. And my first thing as I do is I pull in and look and see if there's water in the basin. And when I came here Tuesday, they were mowing it. But, um, we have a, a retrofit for it that we're gonna use. And I'm just waiting, as I pointed out in my engineer's report, I'm waiting for verbal or written approval. I, I have verbal approval. The Conservation District said, yeah, that sounds like a good idea. Do what you, you're showing on that plan. Now we've sent it to them and we want to get it in writing so we could, uh, make sure that that basin de-waters all the time. And, and the reason why that's of concern is it's real close to the playground. Occasionally we get wet weather, you know, three or four one-inch rainstorms in a week. And you got ponded water out there for a couple of weeks. And, and that's not the way it's supposed to operate, but with the weather, we can't control that, believe it or not. And, uh, then, then you got mosquitoes and bugs and maybe, uh, dangerous water there. So we'll have the ability to de-water when we need to, so. That's all I have on, on my report now. It's to the south of the, uh, municipal building, parking lot. If there are no other questions, I'll take my seat.
Questions? Thanks, John.
Thank you.
All right, now we have our consent agenda items A through K. Are there any items on here anyone would like to have removed for further discussion?
I'll move to approve consent agenda items A through K.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next, we have bids, proposals, contracts and agreements. Authorization to award bids for 2024 road materials and resurfacing project as outlined in June 18, 2024 memorandum from the Director of Public Works.
Mr. Chairman, this is our annual road materials and paving projects as it, the agenda states, um, from the Director of Public Works. I reviewed everything and believe it's very good pricing for the township and recommend approval.
I'll move to authorize awarding the bids for the 2024 road materials and resurfacing project as outlined in the June 18, 2024 memorandum from the Director of Public Works.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 No subdivision and land development, communication from supervisors. Anybody have anything?
I have two things. Uh, first, I want to give a shout out to Mark and his staff. Very pleased to read about the upgrade we received from the rating agency where our debt situation was upgraded from AA minus to AA. And there were some really pleasing comments written by, was it S and P who wrote that?
Yes.
S and P who wrote that, which I think we should put that in our newsletter along with some of those comments they made because I think it does speak to your leadership and the rest of the staff's leadership in creating a culture of strong financial management. So thank you for that. Uh, secondly, I want to go back to something that we had, we had approved a tax exemption here for a program I hadn't known about before, having to do with veterans. And I think the information, the feedback we got was something that the state had passed. I personally would like to get more information about that in terms of, since it's a state program, do we get reimbursed for it? Is this one of the un- what do you call it?
Unfunded mandates.
Thank you, that we, we just have to live with? Um, is this an annual process this applicant has to go through? Or is this once they're granted, it's grandfathered in forever? So a little more background, if we could get that, would be appreciated.
I will, I'll do that. I don't know any answer because that was the first I heard of it as well. And to my knowledge, it's the first time it's been requested.
It sounds like a great program, but again, it's a state program. It would seem that we ought to be reimbursed since we didn't create the program. But knowing how the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania operates, I wouldn't be surprised if it's our dime.
But I will get information that I can gather.
Okay.
All right, next we have solicitor's report.
I have, I have one thing. I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Do you want to hear me?
That depends. Give us a preview.
Now, I, I, um, I don't have any, I, I would like to make sure that this board is addressing the issues, uh, with Hooters um, and what's going on up there on Diner Road. Um, yeah, I know it's something that we were generally aware of. Um, uh, there are probably things happening in the township administration that I'm not aware of, that I'd like to be more aware of. Uh, and I, and I know that this is a reasonably complicated, uh, situation that may require not, not standard responses from Springersbury Township to, to make everything safe and pleasant for our community. So, um, I think the board needs information. You know, we need to make sure that there's coordination between police and zoning and our solicitor, um, which may be happening. I'm just not all aware of it. Uh, and, and I also just want to say that, um, one of the things that I've learned over many years of dealing with zoning issues is that, you know, there are a lot of things we can do with zoning. Uh, and generally enforcing zoning laws is the absolute hardest part of it all because we really don't have much power to enforce. And maybe we need to creatively figure out how we can make the situation better. That's all.
Well said, Don. I've had a lot of those thoughts in the back of my mind too. I think we've had discussions in the past about, um, uh, rogue signs and rogue parking and all, all kinds of things like that. It just seems to me that other communities around us are much stricter about enforcing things like that. And I've asked that question before about how they can enforce it so much better than we can. At least it appears that way. So yes, I, I agree with your comments, Don. Uh, right now, we're looking for manager's report. Oh, sorry. I did ask for your report, didn't I?
I was respectfully giving Mr. Bishop, uh, his time. Usually I would have no update, but, uh, tonight I do have, uh, one addition. So there is an agreement in place currently with, um, Pennsylvania American Water, which was executed back, uh, in February of 2022. Uh, we've been working to, um, amend that agreement or, um, uh, update that agreement, which is expiring July 1st of, uh, of this year. So that's next week, Monday, to be, uh, exact. In our discussions with PA American Water, we, it's just a, a timing of things, that, uh, getting a meeting set. So what we've agreed to do is, uh, just amend the agreement and continue, and, and extend the termination date to September 1st. Um, I did not have time to get it on the agenda for tonight because I was just able to talk with council literally within the last 24 hours to get this, get approval for this. So what I'm suggesting, um, is I have a copy of the amendment here, um, that we execute the amendment on our side. We'll officially approve that if the board so chooses in the July meeting. But I at least wanted to get a signature on paper tonight to send over to them. Um, they've agreed to what this is. There are no changes to the agreement other than the date of termination, which we're extending to September 1st from July 1st to give us two more months, uh, of breathing room on it. So if the board so chooses, I can certainly provide that to you. Any questions?
Does that require formal vote?
We'll do that in July.
No, I mean, tonight to sign, for, for me to sign that, or is that just?
If I can get an acknowledgement?
Okay.
I'm in favor.
Okay.
All right.
All right.
You got, you got your acknowledgement.
All right. Thank you.
All right, now we'll move on to manager's report.
I have two, only two things to add to my written report. Uh, first, in response to Mr. Dvorak's comments about our bond rating increase from double A minus to double A. I do want to take this time to acknowledge the staff's hard work. Not only the finance department and what they do every day, which is a large part of that, but also the other directors and keeping their budgets in check and, and spending, keeping their, their spending well managed. So I, I do want to point that out.
And I'd like to just add on top of that that we've had a tax cut. We built a $17 million administration and police building and upgraded services for, um, for the township in that regard. We have the, uh, the bond rating that has gone up. I mean, the, you guys in administration are doing a lot of things right and we applaud you. You know, everybody here that, uh, that represents the township, um, have done a great job at bringing this all together so that we can provide the best services that we can possibly provide and still give a tax cut to the residents of the township. So, thank you, Mark, you and your team.
Thank you. The second. The second thing is, uh, past due sewer collection. We've been talking about that for several years and we have several balances that are, that are pretty high and, and the finance department's. department's constantly chasing their tail when it comes to past due sewer accounts. So, the water shut off program worked a little bit, but nowhere near like we thought it was going to. So, the next step, I believe, is a formal arrangement with a firm that specializes in sewer collection. And I talked to James about this at length because I didn't want to step on their toes because they're doing what they're doing for us. So, what I'm asking tonight is, would the board be interested in having a work session prior to the July board meeting where this firm would come in and, and we could talk about it for half hour, 45 minutes, what they can do for us?
What's the date of the July meeting?
I think it's July 25. Yes, July 25.
I'm good with that.
Yep. Okay. That's all I have.
Can I, can I make one comment on that subject?
Only one.
I'm fine, I'm fine with talking to, with them. There have been times in the past where we've had bad experiences with, you know, with, with what people say they're going to do compared to what they end up doing. So, I, I think a little bit of research, not with, you know, a vendor telling us how they can do, but, you know, what other people in the community have to say about them is, is worth the investment. That's all.
Good comment.
Mark, I have one question. In your report, you mentioned the sewer fund loan to the general fund for land purchase. Is that something you want us to act on at a future meeting?
No, that's coming up under new business.
Oh, it is? Okay.
Anything else for the manager? All right, then we'll move on to ordinances and resolutions. First up is ordinance number 2024-01, zoning ordinance text amendment, storage of commercial trailers in the general industrial zoning district. We have any discussion on this? We have it figured out? Mr. Sanders, do you, do you want to present what that motion would sound like, just so that I make sure I have it all right?
Yes. Bear with me one second here. Okay, so, what you're presenting tonight is, and I'll repeat what we said in the hearing, the applicant Sand Hill, Sand Bank Hill LLC is seeking a zoning ordinance text amendment as follows. Section 325-5, definition of terms, they're seeking to add commercial trailer, which was not previously defined, and section 325-70 dot B subsection 3, subsec, uh, second subsection E, adding language to expand industrial uses to include parking and/or storage of commercial trucks or trailers. So, the motion would be to amend the zoning ordinance to include the definition of terms, commercial trailer, and to add language to the ordinance to expand industrial uses to include parking and/or storage of commercial trucks or trailers. Do you want me to repeat that?
No, I think, did you get that, Sue?
I'm pretty sure.
Okay, then we're good.
Okay.
Don, you look puzzled.
Yes, I am. So, we have a draft ordinance, at least I have a draft ordinance in front of me. Are we changing that language, or are we just approving this ordinance?
I thought we were, I thought we were changing the draft in front of us to, back to the original request.
You're not changing?
Actually, we're not changing it. We're going back to the, to the original request.
You're sticking with the original request.
Right.
There have been no conditions which have been put forth. So, the two sections that are being updated are what I've outlined here.
Okay. And, and that's the draft that we have in front of us?
Let me make sure. I'll pull it up on my.
I think it is, but I'm just.
It's a good question. I'm.
It's page one of the.
Yes.
Springersbury Township BOS text amend summary.
Correct.
And it's exactly as worded there.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
That makes enough sense that I'd be happy to move to adopt ordinance number 2024-01 as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you.
Thank you.
Resolution number 2024-40, recognition of Dana Beck. Dana.
Dana.
Sorry.
It's all right.
Get to it.
Do we need a motion?
Hang on one sec.
Sure.
So, my understanding is that Dana is not here.
Dana is not here.
I will read the resolution and then we can do our thing. Whereas Dana L. Beck began his career with Springersbury Township on October 5, 1987, as a laborer in the collections department. And whereas Dana was promoted to laborer operator one within the wastewater treatment department on May 20, 1991. And whereas Dana was promoted to operator one within the wastewater treatment department on February 13, 1993. And whereas Dana was promoted to superintendent within the public works department on October 13, 2020, 2003. And whereas Dana served the citizens of Springersbury Township for 36 years and five months with dedication and faithful service. And whereas Dana began his retirement from Springersbury Township on March 22, 2024, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors of Springersbury Township, on behalf of all the citizens of Springersbury Township, acknowledge sincere gratitude and appreciation to Dana L. Beck for his years of dedication, leadership, and faithful public service. The board congratulates Dana L. Beck on his retirement and wishes him and his family much happiness and good health. Adopted this 27th day of June 2024.
Need a motion?
Please.
Mr. Chairman, I would move for approval of resolution number 2024-40, recognition of Dana L. Beck.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 And next I have recognition of Jeffrey D. Abel, resolution number 2024-41. Whereas Jeffrey D. Abel began his career with Springersbury Township on April 11, 1988, as a laborer operator one in the public works department. And whereas Jeffrey served the citizens of Springersbury Township for 36 years and four days with dedication and faithful service. And whereas Jeffrey began his retirement from Springersbury Township on April 15, 2024, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors of Springersbury Township, on behalf of all of its citizens, of Springersbury Township, acknowledge sincere gratitude and appreciation to Jeffrey D. Abel for his years of dedication, leadership, and faithful public service. The board of, Board congratulates Jeffrey D. Abel on his retirement and wishes him and his family much happiness and good health. Adopted this 27th day of June 2024.
I'll move for the adoption of resolution 2024-41.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 I do have to say with these, both these individuals started before me, but I'm quickly becoming the old guy on the street as, because their start date wasn't too far before I started. So, it makes me feel old.
All right, next we have resolution number 2023, that can't be right.
2024-42.
That's not what it says in here.
On the, the agenda does. What's it say?
On the agenda it does, yeah.
I just clicked on the next one. Maybe I clicked on the wrong next one. Nope. It's resolution 2024-42, but when you open it up.
Yeah, it's resolution.
It says 2023-18. So, it's 2024-42. A resolution of the Board of Supervisors of Springersbury Township, York County, Pennsylvania, appointing Robert J. Cluck to the Springersbury Township Historic Preservation Committee.
Mr. Chairman, I move for approval of resolution number 2024-42.
Second.
Appointing Robert Cluck to the Springersbury Township Historic Preservation Committee.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 We'll get, we'll get that corrected, and then you'll, you can, we'll arrange a time to see you. It's, it's correct on the hard copy.
Oh, okay, good.
We're good.
Okay, so now we have old business. Just take a look at this. Springersbury Township Volunteer Fire Company bylaws regarding audit. Do we need to discuss anything there?
The only, I have this in my written report, but I'll, I'll say it. I did have a chance to finally meet with Todd Evans, who is the president of the Volunteer Fire Company and their treasurer. They have no interest in the township doing their audit for us, or for them, or paying for anything. So, I'm doing the research now to see what it is we need to do on our end, so then they can change their bylaws accordingly.
Okay. Anything else on here that we wanted to talk about tonight? We have to at some point talk about the elected board of auditors. I don't know that I'm prepared for that tonight. All right, moving on to new business. 2010 sewer fund loan to general fund for land purchase repayment discussion. Mark?
Terry, she's going to come up to the podium as well, but in 2010, the sewer fund loan, the general fund, $750,000, as the townships share when we bought the land for Camp Security Park. And at the time it was set up that the income that we received from the rental of the land for farming, which is $10,000 a year, that was going to be the, the general fund's repayment plan for the $750,000, which obviously is 75-year payment plan. It has been brought up in the previous S&amp;P global interviews of, they questioned why. And last year, it was brought up by our own auditors, S.E.K., about, do we want to do something different? So, I'll turn it over to Terry if she can fill in anything that I may have missed, or, so.
Well, you pretty much covered it. Most likely, the loan was issued when the general fund reserves were limited in 2010. Since that time, we've built the general fund reserves as well as the capital improvement fund reserves.
I forgot to bring that up earlier when I was congratulating you for all the hard work you do.
Thank you. In addition to the reserves of where they stand right now, we're also waiting on close to $5 million in grant awards that we have not received yet from projects that are already completed. So, it's time to revisit the repayment schedule for this loan and to try and clean it up and get it off the books, both on the sewer fund and the general fund.
Terry, what's the outstanding balance?
It's just under $600,000.
Wow.
And you have a recommendation for what we should pay per year?
My recommendation is to look at a three-year payment plan, $200,000 a year. I think that's reasonable to try and clean it up.
Makes sense to me.
You to vote on that?
It would probably be best to have a vote.
Yes.
But we'll add it to the 2025.
Budget.
Budget.
Correct.
Starting in 20.
And then we'll, okay. And we can approve it at that point, and?
Yeah, I, I would, I would suggest you have some type of formal documentation as to what.
So, head nod right now. Yes, let's do that.
Just acknowledging.
Put it.
Yes, you're acknowledging.
Put it in the, put it in the budget, and when that gets approved, then we'll.
Okay.
Move forward with it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Terry.
Last item on the agenda this evening is discussion about township manager, potential involvement in the collective bargaining process with York Area United Fire and Rescue. This was brought up at recent YALFOR meeting, that we're looking for some professional support for doing the collective bargaining process. I think it's just a good idea. I mean, Mark, you're much more familiar with doing this than probably most of the people that are involved in that process there. We.
Go ahead and finish. I have some things to add to what you're saying.
We had a discussion about having township managers and some other things like that involved in that process. You want to jump in, George?
Yeah, just filling, filling mainly for Bob's benefit, maybe for Mark as well, since Bob doesn't sit in the YALFOR meetings. But this is coming about because 2024 is the final year of two contracts at YALFOR. They have two separate labor agreements, one for their Manchester Township firefighters, the other for what is the Spring Garden, Springersbury Township firefighters. Both those contracts run out at the end of this year. With the Manchester Township group, Tim James, who is the manager for Manchester Township, is the lead negotiator in that contract. And it's mainly because historically, that's how it's been done. He's been the lead negotiator on that, and Chief Huff is there to provide assistance as needed with that. We recently, at the most recent YALFOR meeting, as Mark pointed out, it was brought up that the, the other group has now opened up the bargaining for that contract for Spring Garden, Springersbury. And I thought it would be great to provide additional resources in that contract negotiation because historically, at least in the last one, Chief Huff, along with Pat Harvey, were the ones who ended up negotiating that final agreement. And I thought, you know, given the fact that Manchester has their man, their manager take the lead in that, given the fact that it's always good to have resources such as Mark. the lead in that, given the fact that it's always good to have resources such as Mark. I mean, they always say when you do a good job, sometimes you get asked to do more than, when you're good at something. And I think this is the classic case where he's been very good at negotiating some contracts for us, and I think he could lend a wealth of credibility and help to that process on the Spring Garden, Springersbury contract, which is just now beginning. So that's why we're here tonight, is to kind of run this by the board and see what the thoughts are in terms of, you know, we, I don't think we've had any conversation with Mark, so he's hearing a lot of this for the first time where this came from.
Didn't I bring that up?
Congratulations, Mark.
Yeah, because I, didn't I ask you to put it on here?
Yep, you asked me to put it on here, but I assumed I knew what it was about, but that was, that was it.
That's why there was no explanation. I think it's a great idea. You're very good at what you do, and you'd be a big addition to their, their team.
The other piece to that came up as well in terms of if we do need to engage a labor attorney, which that hasn't been determined yet, do we retain Pat Harvey again for that? Or do we look at other options? Because I know we've considered other options in some of our negotiations as well, maybe going more local with the firm.
Yeah, and I think I brought that up in the past, that, you know, we've been trying to bring things in closer to home. I just get the feeling that people closer to where we are understand us a little better than people from several hours away. Including chiefs of police and other.
I'd just like to thank Mark for volunteering.
I think it's settled.
That voluntold.
There you go. Refresh my memory, is there something that, that we have to do on the YALFOR board to formalize that?
Well, I think at this point, the next step would be to bring to the YALFOR board whatever the recommendation is, because I think at the end, the YALFOR board has to approve the bargaining team.
Do you know, as the bargaining hasn't started yet?
No, they were just.
The union has filed whatever paperwork just to let them know that they're going to bargain.
Because typically, you set up the team ahead of time, in like, so you're not adding members as things are going on, like this is the team on both sides.
Yeah, there's no team yet, so this is the time.
No, it's absolutely the time.
We're at a wrap. Thanks, everyone.